By God, we turn to you this morning and we're thankful for the blessings of life. We're thankful for a new year. We pray for wisdom and direction as we make decisions for the county. Be with those that are special to us, those that wear badge and uniform, soldiers, sailors, vermin, those first responders, watch over them and keep them safe. Bless our meeting today and keep us in your care. We pray in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. We're gonna make the beginning, but Lisa's making the beginning.
Right. Our first order of business is reorganization of the board. Do I have a motion for President of the Wells County Commissioners?
Yep, I'll make a motion. Mike be the President, Blake be the Vice President.
In favor?
I'll second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. Mr. President, you have control of the board.
Need approval on the minutes? Are there any moves, ads or questions on the previous minutes from last meeting?
I have nothing.
No, I'll have a motion for the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Ask three, zero. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ask three, zero. And payroll of $246,881.75. Any questions on the payroll? I'll entertain a motion for the payroll approval.
So.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We claim totaling $387,179.13. Any questions, adds, moves or changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
This rule, so moved.
All in favor, aye? Three, zero. Scott.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
As of this morning, we have 73 inmates in jail. Thirty-two of those are pre-trial superior, 22 pre-trial circuit, six F6, eight DOC. Other than that, just we're still plugging along with construction, still all on the outside right now. So we're getting ready to do masonry work this, probably this week. All the footers are poured for the new addition portion of the intake areas in the Sally Court. So they're gonna be doing the masonry walls, concrete. It's pretty cold this week, so I doubt they'll be pouring concrete this week.
I was gonna say.
For the flooring. So yeah, other than that, things are moving along. Parking lot's getting a little cluttered with different items and machinery that's in there, but we're chugging along and we're all prepared to make our move, which will probably happen this month out of our current intake area and into our temporary ones. So we're ahead of the game on that and looking good. So other than that, I don't have anything else to report. If there's any questions.
When have they said that construction should be done on that? I know we've covered that before. Has that changed at all?
No, no. They, we've been having bi-weekly construction meetings. We have another one next Tuesday at 1:00. So they've been meeting with us about every two weeks. Doesn't mean we don't talk to them any other time, but yeah, since the last meeting, as far as their timeline plan, everything's on schedule. They've had to shift some things around as far as material issues, you know, things that are, they're having a problem getting in and they had to change those timelines. But no, the projected is still, I mean, it's a long way off, but they're looking at September, October of this year to be complete, so.
Any other questions, guys?
No.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sean, what do you got?
Good morning.
Morning.
We've been, we had some people off the last couple of weeks using up their time for the year. We've been out doing some brush cutting, grading gravel roads as weather allows. You know, we've had a lot of rain here lately and trying to keep up with that with a minimal amount of workforce. I think we're doing pretty good with that. We have all the snow equipment ready and as weather allows, we'll continue to brush cut, grade gravel roads and take care of some issues around the county. We've been sweeping up some loose gravel here the last couple of days.
You get 700?
Yes. Well, they're finishing it this morning.
Okay.
So we, we worked on it last week and couldn't get it completed, so this morning it'll be finished. And we have a couple of other places I've noticed around the county will be taken care of.
Appreciate that. You said you had one, somebody turned in a notice today. Is that right?
Yeah, I wasn't gonna bring it up. Yeah, it was too soon.
Thank you.
I just wanted to make you aware, but kinda too, I don't have all the details and so.
Okay. Any other questions, guys?
No.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Nate?
Good morning. Yeah, I was one of those guys that used up time off the last few weeks, so I'll apologize. These notes are so short, I'll be sure to make them really long next time. You're gonna make up for it? So, no. Just a little update. Applications will open today for Community Crossings Mansion Grant for the first, first part of this year. I should have financial commitment letters ready for you all for the next meeting for approval and signature. I've reached out to both VS Engineering and BFNS Engineering to make sure that I've got full documents in place. I've gotten response emails back from one of them. I should have a, a full plan set ready for a final review this week from VS and I'm expecting something from BFNS. I've already done a preliminary review for their project, so we should be in good shape for our applications, so we'll be ready to turn those in. So I'll bring those to you at your next meeting. Bridge 403, this was one of our Community Crossings Mansion Grant. This was a second call last year. That was an awarded project. I am requesting your approval on this project to go out for bid this week. It'll go out to bid here on the 6th. I gotta get my days right for it. This is for the bridge on County Road 800 South over the David Drain. This is between 1,000 West and 1,100 West. I'll send the legal notice out to the newspaper with your approval and signature on that.
I don't have any issue with that.
You got it?
No.
Motion to approve the, the bridge?
I'll second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. And then Blake's got a copy of that paperwork right there, so we'll just get that after the meeting. I'll, I'll review it with him. Sure. Thank you.
Yep. NOFO 2027 application. This was our Phase Two of County Road 200 South. I turned that application in. I think I'd reported to you that we had received approval, that they had accepted that application. I have just recently received invitation for a presentation for that, so we're going on to the next stage at that point. Right now, it sounds like it's gonna be a Teams meeting, so it sounds like it'll be an online interview as it was with the last phase, but I'm hoping that they'll change and do some in-person interviews. I think the in-person interviews work a little bit better, but certainly it sounds favorable for us. I'll keep you posted as when that is, if you wanna log in and participate, or if it's in person, I'll keep you posted for it. So just wanted to let you know about that. Bridge 106, there was a public hearing prior to Christmas. Really lightly attended, honestly, so I'm not anticipating major issues.
That was my question. I knew you had that in mind.
Yep. We, we broke a record for low attendance for the PM that was there for Mendo for us. So really only had three people that attended the meeting from the residents and, and they're, the, the local residents had been submitted paperwork as far as that meeting, those that were gonna be any right-of-way acquisition necessary. This is part of the environmental documents, so any of the comments that we receive will go into that environmental document so we could turn that in. So, but really, it's a rehab project on a historic select bridge there over the Rock Creek, so.
What were their concerns?
Mostly the concerns we got from the neighbors were construction duration, how long would the project take, when it's gonna start, and one neighbor was bringing up complaints about their other neighbor and some other things that are kinda not part of the actual project. So we, we'll, we'll look into those and I think I'm, I'm gonna make sure Sean's aware of some of the issues, that maybe those things that we need to try to take care of are in and around Rockford. So that's all that I had. I had left right-of-way dedication. I hadn't received any right-of-ways for any of our room conversion areas. I'm not sure if anything came into the attorney's office at all or not.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't think we have anything for that, so we'll just strike that. Other than that, any questions for me?
Nope.
I have none.
Excellent. Well, appreciate it. Hey, thank you very much and we'll make 2022 a good year. How's that?
Thank you very much. Is anyone from the Health Department here?
My office.
Anyone from the Health Department here?
Nobody. Less than five minutes.
Few's notified, though, right?
Health Department's notified to be here, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, may show. Alrighty. Ben?
He's not here yet.
Not here? Yeah. Alright, well, moving on.
COVID does have a down trend. We're orange at 2.5, so it looks favorable.
That was her last email, right?
So, things on the website and the state, so.
That's good.
Hey!
You're up. Hey, here he is. Come on.
We had you next, so.
Great.
Morning.
Morning.
Morning, sir.
Where we left it was, we signed a 10-day hold on the truck, so we were able to see it, physically see it, make sure it fit, was the big thing, and just look at the, look at the truck overall. Last Wednesday, it came in. It's a beautiful truck, plenty of storage, actually more storage I had expected. Definitely would fit everything that we, would fit all our equipment on it, fit in the, to fit in the station. I emailed last night, I got the final numbers last night, and I have copies of those as well. Total dollar amount would be with equipment that we would need, some of the equipment as well. There are some changes as far as like the seating that we need to change out. It's $535,554. That is complete. That includes training on the truck, or they come up for two days to train us on it and everything. As far as the warranties, the truck would have a bumper-to-bumper warranty of one year from Hoosier Fire, and then each of the other systems, so the electrical, warning lights, structural body warranty would be a nine-year warranty instead of a 10. They're prorating it because it's a demo. A paint warranty would go down to a nine-year instead of a 10. The pump would be a five-and-a-half or five-year warranty instead of six-and-a-half. Nine-year plumbing warranty and a tank warranty is a lifetime manufacturer warranty. So overall, it's a great truck. It would really serve us well and I think we'd be saving quite a bit of money actually on this one compared if we built one.
So what's a mechanism to get that loan? Right, we're gonna do a loan on this? Is that what we're talking about financing?
I've contacted Star Financial to get back with me. They, the person responsible was in a different office, so they're gonna get me a, similar to what we did with both Love and Main Liberty financed through, I think, a seven-year note bond or whatever it was. Also, Ossian, which is now First Merchants, no.
Yes.
Farmers Merchants, yeah. Kevin Seals, I made contact with him, told him the same thing, that's what we're looking at, you know, you can get us something. So I said, I don't think you can turn it around that quick that we can have it for Monday's meeting, but definitely the second meeting in January that we can discuss financing. Now, that'll make a difference in possibly how you guys wanna proceed approving this subject to, or just go ahead and move it that either the next meeting or the first meeting of February.
Do any of those, so those other two trucks that were bonded, do any of those, those bonds are off now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
How long does it hold?
The, the 10-day hold is over. What we would need to ensure this doesn't get sold, and currently it's in Indy, they're holding it there to see what happens at this meeting. If we kinda pass on it, it's going to Florida to a show to probably sell. So what would be next would be this contract that you guys would be able to look over, and if there's no money down for it, that would be a 90-day, we'd need, they would just need a payment within 90 days.
90 days, okay.
Yeah, we got 90 days to get something done.
Right. So.
And then once we, once this is signed, it would never come.
Once we approach the financing, it's not gonna happen that day, but we'll be starting to process and problem.
Us saying, us saying okay today and giving you approvals enough for them to hold that, and then it'll be contingent on financing?
Yes.
Is this including?
Vardar Bennett's right here. He's our, he's actually, he's the sales rep for Hoosier Fire, so he can answer that. But that's what the, that's what this contract says right here.
The $12,000 and change that's additions to the number, is that included in the final number?
The final number is 535, 535,554. That's everything.
But the sales guy's here, so we can beat up on it for a minute.
I'm fine with it.
Publicly, yeah.
Yeah.
What would this cost now? If we were to build this same truck, what would it be at now?
With the atmosphere that we're in right now, probably close to 750.
Because of supply, just supply chain stuff?
Yes.
So the additional equipment, the David Clark system and the seating position, everything is?
Everything is.
Meets, meets your needs?
Yes.
I have no guarantee of that.
So I, I say we, I approve that we go get this one, but I think as a group, whether we do it now or in the next meeting, we talk about what do we do on the next, 'cause there's another round coming up in seven years, right?
Right.
So everybody's got one now. We need to identify.
Round, so we.
Right. What the process is and do we, do we start collecting money so that we're not taking loans out, things like that, if we plan on doing this every seven years?
Right.
That needs to be top of your discussion.
This kinda just set a precedent, so you know, we're just kinda keeping the promise, if you want to call it that.
'Cause this one seemed like it was a little, what are we gonna do type thing and I don't wanna be in that same position. So this number says is different than this number. But anyway, $10 off.
10 bucks, huh?
535,554, that was the total number, huh?
Yeah, that's what we got right here.
Something, till we know the financials, they don't know how we do it, but I say we give, give them the okay to get it going and we'll work with Star First Merchants to figure out the payment.
Do we have those financial institutions right now? We've used the best.
We've used Star for the last two.
I wouldn't be in that one.
Yeah, that's why I reached out to Star again, and also since they caught wind of the new banner article, that's why they reached out to us, so.
Good.
They know how it works, too.
Right, because of the tech, it's after organization, accounting property, that kind of stuff, so.
Alright.
Was that, was that your motion?
If you're gonna sign this, we need a motion.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion for that.
So move to sign for the new fire truck for Ossian.
I'll second that.
Yep. So move, geezer, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
You get used to this one, Ben.
Yeah, one day.
Thanks, Ben. Thanks for bringing this.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
Is this a pile of signs?
It's a pile of signs. Okay, I didn't see my name. So annually, you US Commissioners sign a certification on compliance with county contract disclosure, disclosure policy. It's kind of like your nepotism policy. So I just have that for your signatures. I don't really need a motion or anything. I just need to note it in the minutes. And then I have the 2022 solid waste districts salary contract. Wells County pays the solid waste salaries and benefits, and then annually I reimburse that to the county. And this is just the contract that you signed stating that.
Yeah, motion, accept that.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Three, zero. Alright, County Farm. Do we have any updates on that?
We just closed, I know we closed on it.
Everything's closed.
Good.
So that transaction, as far as we stand right now, is done. If there are any issues that were to come up, it's something that I can deal with.
Okay.
It's time to listen.
Okay.
As of right now, doesn't need any attention, though, right?
I'll, I have a little, just make sure everything's cleaned up and taken care of, but other than that, from the board, nothing.
Perfect.
Yeah, we deposited all the checks.
Sorry?
We deposited all the checks.
Good.
Updates on County Highway Garage?
Nate, since you're here, and you're the lead, I think, I think the only thing I mentioned to you is that I think the next two, three months are gonna be critical, and I think we should just plan a day of the week to meet, just so we can say, hey.
Yeah, there's a, there's a progress, project kickoff meeting this week. I think Wednesday is the scheduled date for it, so I guess what we'll end up doing is trying to develop a longer calendar with the consultant. I just sent to Colin the AIA contract with the architect this morning. I got it, I got it late Sunday, so we're just kinda gonna go through that, hopefully get that approved and ready for signature on the 17th. I wouldn't wanna try to push anything through without any earlier than that, since we just got it. I don't wanna recommend approval until we have chance to go through it. So, but yeah, we've got a meeting this Wednesday and then we'll end up going through setting a longer schedule. What I would need from all of you is who wants to be in attendance at those meetings and what dates are available for you so that we can meet with the architect and I guess the rest of the design team.
I was gonna say, I think Sean should be involved in maybe Secretary of, just for the layout of the office side of it.
We'll get, get a couple of key staff in those meetings, so wanna make sure that we get everything into it as far as our input and the years of experience that everybody's had. Hopefully PCI can do everything we're, we're looking for. I, I'm certain that I can.
I do, I definitely wanna attend those if I can, just to make sure that we keep pushing.
So I'll, I'll send the schedule out as far as meeting, make sure everything's available to be there.
Meeting is on the 18th, 17th is MLK Day.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
You'll be having that day off.
I will be having that day off, so I'll make sure I get that correct. So I'd like to go through the walkthrough with them too, show them our process and what we need so we can organize better.
Right, 'cause they had brought that up during our interview process, that willing to hear you and the needs and concerns, so.
So hopefully we can make that happen before the meeting, so they have a better idea of what we're looking at.
Exactly.
I think our meeting's gonna be at our garage, just what they had proposed, so to start with a, let's see where we at first. So I think a lot of it's going to be just walking through our current process and what we have.
Don't be surprised if they show up with a team of like 25 people, 'cause they'll have architects, they'll have plumbers, they'll have all the design guys, maybe not 25, but probably 12 or more.
10, 15.
They'll have surveyors, all sorts.
Take turns walking through them. We'll be standing real close.
Single file.
Those are our pieces.
Hard hats.
Yeah. But it's nice that they get everybody here, go through it, understand what you want, ask the questions.
Yeah, for me, it's just everybody being in the loop, knowing what's going on and hearing what's happening. Steve, we need you involved, so.
Then I'll make sure I send out that. I think the inbox came from PCI, so hopefully they listed everybody that they needed to, so I did a double check who was on that contact list yet, so.
It's come up with a date that works and keep it scheduled, so we stay on top of it. I don't want to be blamed to make the delay, if I can say.
Maybe we invite Chuck.
That'd be a good idea. Any other comments on that? Inter local engineering services, have you heard anything else, Nate?
Nope.
Okay.
As far as I know, it's in the city's hands, and it's kind of up to them if they want to or not. It'll be just an offer to the city as far as kind of value added to them. If we can't come to an agreement, I'm not too concerned.
There's still a question about indemnity, Colin? So that's something that we've kinda gone back and forth.
I did talk to Roy about that, and again, we're looking for stuff, just waiting on the city.
That's in there.
Okay. Anything else on that? Inter local agreement for Emergency Communications Department, I had a meeting with the mayor on some details of that. I'm waiting on a draft back from him to see if we can, if the county and the city can sort of come to terms on how that contract should be set up. I think Scott and I had a conversation about the same, so we're just waiting to see if we can iron out those, those other details, so.
Yeah, we have a meeting this week too, so.
Yeah.
You and, yeah. With a 911 warrant.
Right, gotcha. Anything else on that? Opioid settlement registration, I think Colin, you jumped into that, right?
Yep.
Saddled with all the paperwork, so we, we met our deadline and we're good?
Yes, we're all registered and now let's just wait and see what happens on their end.
But we did what we were supposed to do.
Yes.
Unsold tax sale property? Any update on that? I think.
I think you've got a document regarding, I think it's on West Wiley.
Right. We issued a tax sale certificate and now, do you have, or do you have to notify the?
I have, I have got, I have a letter that I'm gonna write. It needs to be on the auditor's letterhead.
Okay.
And I will give that body of that letter to you. We'll go through it.
Okay.
And then we'll send it out for notice. There's a 120-day redemption period that we'll let them know about. That, that'll be all that we need to do.
Okay.
You need that form of a motion, Lisa?
Or did we do that last time?
We brought it up, but I just wanna make sure whatever we do, you guys can move forward that you don't have to bring it. forward, that you don't have to bring it back to us to get a signature or authorization, give you permission to do what you need to do and move on.
Okay, we'll just do that.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
On favor, aye.
Aye.
Three zero. Twenty-two board appointments, who do we have up first?
So we have outstanding, we have three applications for the health board. The Huntington City Town Public Library, the current appointment would like to be reappointed, and that was the only application that we had. And property tax board of appeals, you have two applications. And then Larry McChesney would like to be reappointed as well.
I'd like a motion to approve Terry Solano for the Huntington County Labor.
Seconded.
On favor, aye.
Aye.
Three zero.
So on the health department, we have one opening?
You have one opening and three apps, yes.
And three?
Theresa's?
Yeah.
I got you.
So on the health department board, I spent time with both Chris and L.A. Brown. I think L.A. brings a lot on the septic that, in my eyes, I don't think we have enough knowledge around there, but I think when you look at everything that board does, I'm in favor of Estherling taking that position.
Okay, I'll make a motion for that.
His medical background, but I didn't know what you guys were thinking.
I don't know him well enough to make that motion.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion, I make a motion that we, we put Chris Estherling on as the health department, replacing the Jack Wanger's position.
So is that two-zero-one?
Uh, yes.
Are you seconding?
I am, yeah.
Actually, it'd be two-one.
Two-one, yeah, I am.
And then we have property tax board of appeals, two positions, three applications. One is currently on the board and would like to be reappointed, the other two are new.
So Kelly, I think you're here to help us walk through this one, right?
Come forward, please, I know I spent twenty minutes with you, but go ahead.
I do have a request, that maybe if you guys would be able to table this until a later time for your decision, because in the statute, it says, towards the bottom on the second page, if you don't act, then the people that are already on there would just continue on until you decide. The reason being is, we already paid the board members to listen to testimony, and we still have some outstanding appeals that we need to decide on, and we're having a meeting next week. If they could just go ahead, they have, like, the person that was up for, that has said that they couldn't do it for the whole year, said they could stay and help us until you do appoint someone. Also, the position was not advertised this time, and I think just to give you more of a choice, it would be nice to have an actual deadline, so we know when people have to have an application and do for that position, and maybe we could get more people that might be interested as well, before you make your decision.
Can we go through the, some of the rules, though, that who, who needs, what makes somebody qualified, and then Larry, my question's about Larry, is that he used to be a number two or number three, I can't remember.
A level two, yeah.
And he's let that go, is he a resident of Wells County?
He is not, he is a resident of Allen County, and he's an appraiser, and he's been on the board for a long time. He brings a lot to the board, as far as picking apart an appraisal, to make sure what we have to do for our, for Wells County, that these appraisers are following the codes that they have to follow. But he also advocates a lot for the taxpayer and asks questions maybe they don't know to ask. He's been on there since, I believe, two thousand and eight or before, because, you know, I wasn't here, but. And his job as an appraiser, he has to take similar classes for the certification, as we do for being an assessor. And so, being, you know, you have to pay for these things, he just went ahead and just did his appraisal stuff, and he does have the knowledge of a level two. He probably can get that back if you're going to require that, but in the statute, you don't have to require that, you can waive that.
Do we have a level one, or a level two, or a level three?
We have a level three that the county council did reappoint, and that was Judy Affelder, Affelder, sorry, can't talk today. And she's also been on the board for a very long time, she is not a resident of Wells County, she is actually a resident of Adams County, and she's also on the board for Jay County. We share her, and we share the cost of keeping her levels up. And we could also offer that to Larry, if he, you know, if you want him to have his level two back, you know, he could, we could help him that, doing that, if you...
You said there's files that are in, in, I guess, in the queue already?
Yes.
When do you anticipate a complete date by, I mean, are you talking like weeks, or is it going to be a month or two?
Next week, when we have this meeting, it's a work session for evidence that they had requested from that hearing. So then they would review all that and come up with a decision, and then invite the taxpayer and the rep to know what the decision is, so they can either go on to the next step, which would be going to the state, or just accept what the kind of...
So currently Beth is in the position, is she willing to stay with the cases that are in the queue?
Yes.
Just to complete those and get those out of the queue? Because most probably the appeals will come up when the new assessments come out, maybe we'll correct.
Generally, the, in a normal year, we wouldn't be meeting until March or April. If we have exempt people that are applying for exempt status, we have to have them approve them, to make sure that they're following everything, to say that they are exempt, like a church, or a school, or whatever it is that they're saying they're exempt, they have to okay that before we, you know, make them tax exempt. And then after that, obviously, will we have any appeals because of Form elevens and the market value, you know, it's...
Under question.
Continues to go up, because we're always a year behind what's really going on in the market.
All right, so to your question about advertising, I don't know that we advertise any other ones.
I did advertise it.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Oh. Is that the only one we advertise?
No, I advertise all of them, whether there's openings or not.
When it's up, it's up, you can put it out there.
So my question is, with Larry not having his two or three, level two or three?
I think he's got twelve-plus years of experience, I, and I've been through an appeals with him. I have no issues with him whatsoever.
So basically, that takes us down to one position, which is Beth Singleton, is that her name?
Yes.
And I know both Chandler and Brandon, both of them have reached out to me, so I, you know, I know both of them, both of them are in the real estate field. Brandon Marth, U-Stores, Chandler Marth, Residential. I'll make a motion to accept Chandler, unless you need further discussion. And Larry, to retain those two.
And Larry to retain.
All right, I second that.
Three zero. We're on favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
Okay, so for clarification, is Beth allowed to finish her...
Absolutely, I think she's in...
I just want to make sure, so I don't overstep anything.
No.
I'd like, I'd still like Chandler to be involved in that.
Oh, yeah, that would be a good learning.
Yeah, I would appreciate if he would have attended, and be, be in the audience at that time.
Okay, I appreciate your guys' help, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. What else do we have? EMA Board, Economic Chamber, so if you take those three.
Which ones are those?
The top two. The top three.
You're saying you'd like to transfer those to me?
Let's, no, I'm opening it for discussion.
Okay. I'd like to, um... Discuss that, what do you think, Jeff? Mike?
Well, I can give, give you my ten, going on, be nine years worth of experience. Chamber of Commerce, I've attended every meeting with the exception of four that I'm aware of, so out of thirty-six, I missed four. The economic development meetings are just a lot more than just going to meetings, there are a lot of phone calls with Chad, different people, and I think I've missed only a couple regarding, well, number one, my, my ankle, not, didn't even miss that, I made, I made all my meetings, but I like to be involved, but at some point in time, you know, it's time to pass the torch, and I'm willing, able, and capable to do it, but if somebody else wants it, I mean, we've got a couple other things that have been added over the time. We have an advocacy group that started, I think both guys, either you or your affiliates are involved with that group, that brought some new light, some new things that, and maybe new avenues, that can bring some of the things we've been pushing for, and get them on a timetable, or get them in the queue that we can get it focused on, that it doesn't get ignored or pushed back like years ago, when we thought we would have something in regards to connector to four sixty-nine. And we pushed that avenue, Nate and I.
Long time.
Long time, and I'm not su, sure with the group, what they have accomplished, I know there's a lot of discussion, which has been really, really good, but hey, I'll do what I want, I mean, I can stay another year and give me time to transition out or whatever, I don't really, you know, I won't, what's best for the county, it's, it's not me, it's...
Absolutely.
It's the, the projects we got lined up, and to make sure everything continues with what we kind of set up and put in place, so...
Would you be interested in doing one of these, Jeff?
I'll do whatever. Blake's got the experience, too, so I don't want to step in and slow something down either, so whatever.
Would you stay on the Chamber of Commerce, then, Blake?
Sure.
And we could put Jeff on economic development.
Okay with that, Jeff, huh?
Sure.
So I'll make a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
I'll make a motion to keep Michael, as our EMA board member.
What's that?
EMA, keep me on EMA.
Yes, seconded.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, three zero. Title coordinator, do we need to do something with that? Is that everything on board?
Roy was the, Roy was the title six coordinator, and you need a name for that for...
Yes, I need one for federal grant applications and community processing, because we'll have to have certain forms submitted, so...
Right.
I need to have one appointed, and so that I can have a signature on the letter, essentially with our community processing's application.
And that previously was?
That was Roy.
Yeah, I'm happy to continue on, and I've, I've gotten ahead of it, there's some training that needs to be done through INDOT, and I'm working on dates to get that done and out of the way already, so I'm happy to service that.
So you made a motion for that?
Sure.
Seconded.
Okay, on favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Three zero.
Yeah, just keep this...
Congratulations, Colin.
So we know where you're at with that, if there's any delay.
Sure.
Need to make a list, Colin, of all the things you just signed up for.
Yeah, I thought...
I want his county attorney, yeah.
Surprise!
Miscellaneous, miscellaneous business?
I think Chad had something for us, too, so...
Chad, come on down.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have three things for you guys today. One is, I believe about a month or so ago, you approved a letter of support for Heartland, REMC's application to the community, or to the state for funding to increase broadband. Adams Wells is actually, is also submitting an application, and have a letter in front of you, or you should have a letter, to approve for that same support, as they look to build out, and not in the same area, but they're continuing to build out into the rural parts of the county. Our hope is, is that between the three local telecoms, between Heartland, SITNET, and Adams Wells, that we can continue to build out rural broadband, so would request your support to, for that, for them to seek funding, hopefully from the state, to continue that build out.
So moved.
Seconded.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
The next thing I have is formally making a request for the town of Zanesville, they're currently undergoing a master plan with a company called Avon Marsh. Allen County's committed ten thousand, the, and requesting Wells County to commit ten thousand dollars towards that, it's a forty thousand dollar study, and we're working on filling in a little bit of a funding gap yet, but would like to formally make the request for the counties, Wells County support to that project.
And what is it, again?
A master plan, so it...
I went through the presentation with them thirty, four months ago, possibly.
How do you feel about it?
I recommend it, I was, spoke with Teresa and Rich, I think their initial request is twenty.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken, or something like that.
Yeah.
And I was waiting to hear back, I wanted to hear, and he kind of said, well, they didn't want to commit quite that much, and we did feel that we should supersede them out.
Right.
Even though they have sewage that's going into the Allen County wastewater treatment
It goes into, it's Fort Wayne.
Whatever it is, yeah.
It's supplied by Fort Wayne, so...
So just kind of like some of the, with the town being on board of Allen and Wells, who does what, and I think it should be shared equally, and I would support that.
And they've been very involved, they're, they've, they've had meetings, so the master plan is kind of taking, if you're familiar with the comprehensive plan that's currently going on in Wells County, this dives it down to the very local level. Our intention this year is to encourage all of our communities to take the Wells County comprehensive plan and dive it down to the local level. The comprehensive plan that's being done for the county is a little more larger holistic, but doesn't say like, they've identified this land for this use, and so on and so forth. That's what the master plan does, is it takes both land use, identifying for future growth, identifies potential projects that they might do in the community, it's a growth document. And they're getting few, about a month into it, I know their next engagement is working with Allen County and understanding how the four sixty-nine, Indianapolis Road, what does that look, and how, how does that impact the town of Zanesville, and so on, so it's really a, it's, it's setting them up for growth, and what the next ten, twenty, and thirty years looks like for the community.
So you made a motion for...
I made a motion for the ten...
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
And the last request is, as we look into twenty-two, twenty-two, and building inventory, we have currently a spec building going up here in Bluffton, that's two hundred thousand square feet. We would like to look at the possibility of putting one up in Ossian, on some land up there, currently investigating, but wanted to kind of seek your commitment in partnering with the town of Ossian, if we were able to get something to move forward, if you guys would have an interest in partnering with them at a sixty-forty level, whatever that might look like, and if we do come to an agreement at some point in time, that... look like, and if we do come to an agreement at some point in time, that you would authorize, Colin, to work a agreement out with the town of Ossian for that funding.
We need everything we can possibly get, and I would make that motion to support it.
Seconded.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero.
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks, Chad.
Anything under miscellaneous?
Chad was.
That's it?
Oh.
Anything else?
Yes, we have something else.
Who's hanging back there?
I know one.
Was hiding. We discussed the Molly River Basin Commission proxy, and the Grange Board approved it there, wasn't sure if, the seat is actually a commissioner's seat, so we figured that we probably better have you guys approve that in the commissioner meeting as well.
And that was to have Diana.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Seconded.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Three zero. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have nothing.
Colin, aye?
Uh, no.
Lisa?
I don't have any.
Jessica? Audience? There's not all, except the most during.
So moved.
Seconded.
On favor, aye?
Aye.